Good evening, everyone. I'm going to call the meeting to order. Could you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Role call, please.
Mayor Gibbons.
Here.
Councilmember Litzel.
Here.
Councilmember McLean. Councilmember Reiniker.
Here.
Councilmember Schaefer.
Here.
Councilmember Zimmer.
Here.
Councilmember Jack Settich.
Here.
Thank you. We will now move into presentations. And tonight, I'm very thrilled to have the Urban Forestry Commission here. And Mike Hankins from the Chair of that Commission has a report for us. If you'd please.
Yeah, thank you very much. Thanks for having us. Just go over the report. This report's going to cover actually two years, 2022 and 2023. We'll just start with the member roster. We've got a full member roster, seven of us. Joanne Osborne, Tim Cox, Shane Staten, Tanner Kraft, John Baker, and Brandon Larkin, who is here.
Thank you.
And myself. But I also want to mention former members because this covers two years. And we had some members term out and some resign just due to moving or other things. But Ned Golderman, Chris Mulitor, Carol Rush, Barbara Sanhagen, Renee Warner, David Slayne, and Mariah Harris have all served during this 2022-2023 timeframe. Also mention liaison representation, Kerry Wertz, Nancy Lutzow has served as council liaisons, and Gina Jacksettich is our current council liaison. David Wiedler, Corey Meyer, and Josh Karen have all served as staff liaison. And Brandon Sly, who is also our urban forester, is serving as current staff liaison with some support from David during this transition, as he transitions into his new role as urban forester. One of the main things we do on the commission is we approve tree removal requests. And these are trees that are in the public right of way. They have to come to us for basically permission to remove the trees. During the 2022-2023 timeframe, we had 11 total requests for tree removals in the right of way. They were all removed, but many on the condition that another tree would be planted. So in other words, if someone needed a tree removal due to redeveloping the property, a driveway being moved or something, we would ask that they plant another tree after the redevelopment is finished, so we don't lose any canopy. I would say the main drivers for these tree removal requests are lot redevelopment and also just wrong tree, wrong place. Big tree planted under power lines, raising the sidewalks. They just become a danger. So that's another source of requests. Want to mention the Kirkwood Tree Inventory, a Tree Inventory Canopy Study and Urban Forest Master Plan was completed in 2022. It's a fairly good-sized document. And it's also a good source of guidance for the commission. We're starting to use it to come up with ideas on suggestions for the council and on things we can do to promote the urban forest in Kirkwood. Kirkwood Junior Treekeepers, it's a program in transition. As many of you probably know, this used to be in the schools. It hasn't been for the last couple of years. We've actually moved it to summer camp. There are 50-minute sessions, 45, 50 kids are in each session. We've learned that it hasn't been a perfect fit because it's summer and it's fun time and not learning time. And we were trying to, you know, do tree identification and more classroom, outside classroom-type activities. So we're looking into some, doing something different in the future. And we've got actually a subcommittee looking at that now. Probably one of the things we're looking at is doing a week-long summer camp with field trips through parks and rec. So that's something you'll probably hear about in next year's, next year's report. Green Tree Festival continues to be our signature event. Our booth, we've been doing it for a long time. Our booth has a lot of interests. A lot of people wanting, have questions about their trees, something they're seeing doesn't look right. Are they dying? Or just what is this tree? They show us a picture. We don't know. We can't figure it out. So we help with that. It's always a good time. Tree City USA, to celebrate our 33-year of earning this designation, the commission and volunteers planted 33 trees on Arbor Day in 2023. And this was a larger event than we've done in recent years. We had food trucks. There were sponsors. It was near the grounds of the, of the farmer's market. And we also gave away free trees. These are small trees. Usually they're about to put their young trees, and that's always a big hit. People are always very interested in getting those and learning about how to plant them. Education, we continue to have our utility inserts every year, usually in October. And then, of course, we, one of the big things that happened during this timeframe is the tree ordinance. It was updated. And those, the new ordinance was updated and approved by the council in September of last year. And the commission did, we did take part in looking at that, looking at the changes and making suggestions for how to make it better and what we thought of it. So that was a big, big win for us in 2023. And lastly, 50 Trees, so we don't officially partner with 50 Trees. But a lot of our commission members do work with them. There's a planting this Saturday. And just to give you some stats that that organization shared, they maintain 400 trees in both 2022 and 2023. And in each of those years, they planted 70 new trees, so 140 trees during this time. It's a big undertaking. It's finding sites, visiting sites, buying the trees, organizing the volunteers. It's a huge undertaking for this organization. So definitely deserved mentioning. So with that, I, we're going to move on to our advocacy award to Jerry Pence. He won last year's advocacy award that we award every year as a commission to someone who promotes Kirkwood's urban forest. So a few things about Jerry. He's a professor at St. Louis Community College at Merrimack. He is also the director of the Horticulture Program at Merrimack. During his tenure at Merrimack, the Horticulture Program has developed a tree inventory and used it to increase plant diversity on the campus and focus on adding more native trees on the campus. During the last year or two, I think Merrimack also received a designation as a Tree Campus USA. Jerry has served over 30 years in the green industry, including landscape design and build, retaining retail, I'm sorry, garden centers and wholesale growing. So Jerry, if you want to come up. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. No, just right in front would be fine. Yeah. Make sure that he plants a tree of similar size and quality and then the care of it for the next, you know, five or six years.
It's part of the approval process. When we go ahead and grant permission to have the tree removed, we'll specify that it has to be a tree usually from our tree manual. And it's, we sometimes will specify a size, never a species. We want the, we want the homeowners to pick those out. But that's, that's the process. We don't follow.
You want to go back two or three years later and make sure the tree is still there?
As a commission, we do not.
I know one of the issues that we face as a city is developers coming in and knocking every tree down because they think it's fair to develop. And then they put some new trees up that are, that died and forth in the first.
Yeah, yeah. Watering is really important. New trees need a lot of water, watering a couple of times a week.
So that's why I was just wondering what kind of restrictions you have on that. Okay.
From our liaison?
And one of, the, the commission actually makes recommendations and works with the forester, the city forester on that. So, you know, it's kind of a joint. Forester, I think, does some level of follow-up.
I think so too. Yep.
Not embedded in, in any code or anything. So maybe in the future. All right. Well, thank you very much to both of you that are here for all the work that you do. Congratulations to Jerry for the award. We appreciate it. Very good. Thank you. All right. Now we are going to move into a public hearing. At this time, the council will recess to conduct the public hearing. And this public hearing is a request for zoning code text amendment on garage design in residential zoning districts, Section 2548F, specifically for the RMM zoning district. Mr. Hustle, do you wish to enter any exhibits into the record?
I would, Mayor. It offers Exhibit 1, an affidavit of publication verifying that St. Louis County published the report for this hearing. Again, it's a request for a zoning code text amendment on garage design in residential zoning districts, Section 25-48F, specifically for the RMM zoning district. I would also note that the St. Louis County published notice of the public hearing for this, that is coming forward, which is a request for a zoning map amendment for R5 to RMM Part 223 West Monroe. I mentioned that specifically because it's my understanding that the staff will be making a presentation for both issues at the same time because they're intertwined. So what we would characterize as the second public hearing will be nothing more than adopting all of the exhibits and all the comments from staff and questions from the city council, the discussion from the city council as part of that hearing as well. So they will be combined. Having said that, Exhibit 2 is an affidavit of publication verifying that notice of this public hearing as well as the next public hearing appeared in the Webster-Kirkwood Times. Exhibit 3 is a list of property owners to whom notice of this hearing has been sent. Exhibit 4 is a viewer map showing the property that is the subject of the public hearing as well as surrounding properties. Exhibit 5 is a report, subcommittee report of the Planning and Zoning Commission from October 3, 2024, addressing both the zoning code text amendment as well as a zoning map amendment. Again, I will note that the recommendation, having trouble calling up right now, was to approve both of the zoning code text amendment and Exhibit 6 is a report of the Planning and Zoning Commission, Exhibit 7 is a code of ordinances to the city of Kirkwood.
Mr. Widdler, who will present this issue to the city council?
That would be City Planner 2, Amy Laurie.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm actually going to start with the zoning map amendment because that's maybe a little bit more simple. And so the request is for a change from R5 multifamily to RMM, which is also a multifamily district. But as you recall, the RMM district is for small-scale multifamily projects that are transitioning from either detached, single-family residential districts to more intense multifamily or commercial districts. The number of RMM multifamily dwelling units is capped at six per lot, although there can be more if they're set up as townhomes. In this case, the applicant wishes to construct a duplex. And so the subject property is on West Monroe. It is between, it is already zoned R5. It is between already two multifamily projects. And there's a single-family home on the end, but it is directly north of single-family homes as well. And here's just a zoom in, kind of on the property. You can see it's a single-family home and surrounded by condominium projects. So this survey of the lot, it's approximately 61 feet by 153, and it's about 9,300 square feet. And as I said, there's currently a single-family home on the, on the, on the lot. This is just some pictures of the block on the north side. As I said, there's a single-family home on the western end. And as you go east, condo project, the house itself, and then another condo project on the clay side. This is a summary of the RMM and the R5, the general regulations. And the maximum building height and the lot coverage are about the same for RMM and R5. The advantage of the RMM zoning is a smaller side yard setback. So it's only eight feet as opposed to 12 feet or 50% of the building height. And the smaller setback is in exchange for a less dense project. Exhibit 4 is a viewer map showing the property that is the subject of the public hearing as well as surrounding properties. Exhibit 5 is a report, subcommittee report of the Planning and Zoning Commission from October 3, 2024, addressing both the zoning code text amendment as well as a zoning map amendment. Again, I will note that the recommendation, having trouble calling up right now, was to approve both of the zoning code text amendment and Exhibit 6 is a report of the Planning and Zoning Commission, Exhibit 7 is a code of ordinances to the city of Kirkwood.
Mr. Widdler, who will present this issue to the city council?
That would be City Planner 2, Amy Laurie.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm actually going to start with the zoning map amendment because that's maybe a little bit more simple. And so the request is for a change from R5 multifamily to RMM, which is also a multifamily district. But as you recall, the RMM district is for small-scale multifamily projects that are transitioning from either detached, single-family residential districts to more intense multifamily or commercial districts. The number of RMM multifamily dwelling units is capped at six per lot, although there can be more if they're set up as townhomes. In this case, the applicant wishes to construct a duplex. And so the subject property is on West Monroe. It is between, it is already zoned R5. It is between already two multifamily projects. And there's a single-family home on the end, but it is directly north of single-family homes as well. And here's just a zoom in, kind of on the property. You can see it's a single-family home and surrounded by condominium projects. So this survey of the lot, it's approximately 61 feet by 153, and it's about 9,300 square feet. And as I said, there's currently a single-family home on the, on the, on the lot. This is just some pictures of the block on the north side. As I said, there's a single-family home on the western end. And as you go east, condo project, the house itself, and then another condo project on the clay side. This is a summary of the RMM and the R5, the general regulations. And the maximum building height and the lot coverage are about the same for RMM and R5. The advantage of the RMM zoning is a smaller side yard setback. So it's only eight feet as opposed to 12 feet or 50% of the building height. And the smaller setback is in exchange for a less dense project. With regard to the future land use map, when the city does get these requests for zoning map amendments, we do check this future land use map in the 2035 Comprehensive Plan. And this property is in the area designated as general residential. So that's all this yellow, and it's right in this area. And that's primarily single-family homes. There in the, in this general residential, that's generally a gridded street pattern, so not cul-de-sacs and curvy linear streets. So it's more walkable. And the Comprehensive Plan states the CIST model should promote an appropriate variety of housing types based on the physical nature of the property and trends for desired housing. So along with single-family residential in this develop, in this module, other development types do include attached residential, duplex, townhomes and apartments, senior citizen facilities, parks, and other institutional uses. The comp plan does point out that there's already a number of residential, I'm sorry, alternative residential zoning types such as duplexes and townhomes in the area around downtown that is bounded by Essex on the north, Rose Hill on the south, Taylor on the east, and Harrison on the west. And so it states in this area that multifamily projects can serve as a buffer to the single-family residential that is surrounding it. And so a duplex, as proposed by the applicant, is again among one of the suggested types under the Comprehensive Plan, and especially given that it is located between the boundaries of Essex, Rose Hill, Taylor, and Harrison. On the future, the Downtown Master Plan, this property was identified, along with the condos around it, as maybe a long-term redevelopment opportunity for the city. So the requested zoning map amendment aligns with both the Comprehensive Plan and the Downtown Master Plan. So that brings us to the second request, which is tied in with this zoning map amendment, is for garage design. So this is going to be a little bit longer explanation. But we have this garage design regulations in our zoning code. It was added in 2004. And the first thing was added was the first section, which is this 55% rule. So it states that the width of attached garage where the entrance faces the street can only be 55% of the facade of the house. That, as I said, that was added in 2004. The next two sections were added in 2008. Although the final version of two, of the third section was amended in the 2021 zoning code revision. So right now, the front facade of a garage, if it projects beyond the house, can only be eight feet in projection, and there has to be a porch attached to it. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended this change in red based on what the applicant had asked for. And I'll get to why it's a lot less than 75 feet would be exempt from this portion of the code. But first, I want to show you what the 55% rule and how that works. So if you have a residence where the garage is at the same plane as the residence, then again, the garage can only be 55% of that total facade. You can project the garage out in front of the house, but only a maximum eight feet, and there has to be a porch attached to it. So some of the developments in town that I can show you, this house was built in 2002 before the 55% rule was put in place. Here's a house built 2016, and it obviously has to follow the 55% rule. This house is at the end of the street of the block we're talking about, and it's also zoned R5. But at the time that this house was built, the 55% rule did not apply to multifamily. Because when we changed the code in 2021, we, originally, the code just applied to single-family. And I don't know if you, you probably don't remember old code, but we had it so that everything under the R1 district was a whole list of things. And so this 55% rule would have been under that list. Everything under R2 had a whole list, and that 55% rule was there. When we redid the code, we got rid of the lists for each district, and this 55% rule was applied to residential across the board. So we, we, I don't know that there was a thought that it would apply to multifamily, but now it inadvertently applies to multifamily as well as single-family. So what does that mean? We looked at with the Planning and Zoning Commission, lot widths. And if you have a multifamily development and you want to put a garage to the back of the lot, you need 29 feet on one side of the structure for a two-car drive aisle of 22 feet plus a seven-foot landscape buffer. And so as you get smaller and smaller in these lots, the width, which is this green part of what the building can be, gets smaller and smaller. So this was if you have a drive to the back. By the time you get down to a 60-foot lot, your project can only be 23 feet wide.
Do you want to ask questions during this or?
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's great.
Why does it have to be 29 feet?
Because for commercial projects, we require a two-way drive aisle that has to be 22 feet wide.
So a duplex is considered commercial?
Yes.
Thank you.
And so this was with the RMM lots with an eight-foot side setback. If you go back to the, the R5 lots, you have to have at least a 12-foot side back and maybe even a bigger one if you go the full height of the building because it's, the setback is half the building height. So if we get to lots with a front-entry garage, now you don't have to have that driveway to the back. It does give you a little bit more room to have a bigger building. But as you get down further to your 60-foot wide lot, I've kind of made these little squares of how big a garage would be, you're not going to be able to make that 55% front facade for, say, a duplex. And that's why this applicant has asked for a zoning text amendment. The SOB committee did conclude that if a property is less than 75 feet in width, you can't practically accommodate a drive aisle along the side of the building, and therefore you need to have front-facing garages. And if you have a front-facing garage, that 55% rule is, they determined that's not really reasonable as well for these narrow lots. So if we want to promote the RMM, smaller multifamily projects on some of these smaller lots, then the Planning and Zoning Commission recommends that the 55% rule not apply. Just, this is not what the applicant proposes to build, but these are just illustrations of what a front-entry garage door might look like on a project like this. Obviously, the A, the ARB has mandatory review of multifamily projects, and they'll want to see high-quality work and materials. But for this property right now, which is 61 feet in width, and the building could only be about 45 feet in width itself, the Planning and Zoning Commission said that garage doors in total had, could be 36 feet or less in width. So rather than determining how wide the garage is, they said, let's just look at what the, how wide the garage doors would be. So they felt comfortable with a project that is on a lot of 75 feet or less being able to have 36 feet in garage doors. So generally, a residential garage door is 16 feet in width, but it could be up to 18. So that's back to what the request is. And if you have any questions about what Planning and Zoning proposed or if you have any questions of the applicant, he is here as well.
Any questions?
I know that was a lot.
It is a lot. That's another Litzel.
Mayor, hi, Amy. I have a couple of questions. So with the front-facing garage and the eight-foot projection, proposed eight-foot projection, and then a requirement that a porch be attached to it. My fuzzy memory about porches and all of that. Is this going to adversely affect the front yard setback and the averaging with nearby buildings or anything like that with this porch allowance? Because with single-family residents with a porch, I think you can get a porch.
So what we're saying is- So what we're saying is this whole garage section with the porches, with how far out the garage sticks in front of the building should not apply if you have a very narrow lot in the RMM district only.
As far as front yard setback, would the building, would the garage and the porch still be at the same averaged front yard setback?
We don't, the front yard setback is to either the front of the garage or the front of the house, whichever is closest. The porch does not figure into that at all.
Okay, so without the garage sticking out, without the porch, it would be the same front yard setback?
It would just be to the front face of the building.
It would be an average of whatever is on either side?
Yes.
Okay. I was having a hard time understanding the whole thing about a sidewall sticking out from, what was that all about? I was trying to imagine in my mind what exactly that was saying.
I don't want to get into this tonight, but I'd be happy to show you if you want to come by the office. That doesn't usually apply very much. But again, what we're trying to say in this particular instance, none of the one, two, or three would apply to a narrow lot.
Again, we're talking about storing cars. And over time, I see so many single-family residences where people don't put their cars in the garage. They become storage areas for all their stuff, or they become a man cave or something like that. I don't know if we're making allowances for garages that really aren't. I'm just having trouble of, like, sort of projecting into the future about garages. And I mean, before the change to the 55% front, it was like, you know, garage with house attached. So I'm glad we changed it and narrowed that whole thing. Are we inching toward more like garage with house attached? And now maybe requiring that they be more aesthetic garages possibly?
I think requiring it be more aesthetic garages and also looking at something like this is probably what will be built. So if you're looking at the garage as a percentage of a wall face,
Yeah.
then it's not as, yes.
So I'm not sure if we need to change the garage, because ARB, I mean, right now, front-facing garages have to have lights. Now, would these be considered all lights?
Yeah.
Not just the top row? And I don't know if they need to start rethinking how they treat specifically these kinds of MM structures and all of that. Do you see adverse consequences for this at all? Did the commission?
I mean, I think, you know, I guess it depends where the RMM is located. We are trying to locate those on the ones that we've done so far. I guess the one we've done is on Big Bend. So, you know, there's not, there are single-family residences in the area and across from it, but it's not like, it's a busy street, so you're not looking right out at it. In this case, yes, there are single-family uses across the street, but it's also between two already condo projects.
Right. I mean, I can see this, you know, assuming things go sort of as maybe envisioned or hinted, that this would be a positive project in, you know, an area that's suitable for what they're talking about. I was just wondering if making this change, with the zoning code change, and then possible projects RMM down the road, are there any kind of loopholes that might be there? Or these new setbacks of eight foot instead of 12 feet? You know, would that?
Well, each RMM rezoning will have to come before council.
Okay.
So there is that. I will say that when we did set up, like, the minimum lot size for RMM and the lot width, the minimum for this is 7,560 feet. However, the way that we have it set up, you can't really build a multifamily project on that because of this 55% rule.
They could get variance too for hardship that we created. I don't know. Thought there was one more thing, but... So lot coverage has to be 40% or less, right?
Correct.
No FAR with these?
There's no FAR in the multifamily districts.
Might be all I can... And the corner lots, did that have to do with something about corner lots?
Well, in this case, and that may be a consideration that we did not think of. In a corner lot, you really don't need this rule because you can take the garage from the side.
Right. So...
I mean, that may be an amendment to say that this does not apply to a corner lot in RMM if that gives you comfort so that...
Well, maybe.
Yeah.
I mean, if it's unnecessary. The whole thing about the two-lane, 29-foot-wide lane, drive lane on R5s, multifamilies, I'm just wondering, would a dual lane be triggered if you had X number of units? Because if there's only two, do you really need 29 feet wide of pavement?
That's the way our code reads, so...
Well, I'm just wondering if, because of stormwater issues, because of, I don't know what else, we'd rather have green space and grass than pavement if it's not... Did the commission talk at all about?
Did not talk, the commission did not talk about that.
I'm just wondering if it might be something to consider. I don't know. But that's all the questions for now. Thanks.
That's Honorable Schaper.
Just one point that I'd like to make. If we rezon this from current to the proposed, that this change would apply citywide, correct?
No, this is just to, the text amendment would apply citywide. The rezoning is only for this particular lot.
Okay, so I'm reading in all of this that this change would apply citywide.
The text amendment would.
If we, I've got a question for you. We're talking about changing the side setback from 12 feet, whatever, there was, there were other wording in there, to eight. How is the water mitigation going to work?
I mean, they would still have to do stormwater project. It does not necessarily need to be on the side. It can be in the rear of the property or in the front yard.
I know the applicant is here. Do you have anything that you would like to say? And I think we might have other council members have questions, but if you'd like to say something before that, and then we'll also ask more questions.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name's Jack Davis. I'm a member of the JKL Investments. And I don't really have too much to add to Amy's presentation with regard to the technical side of this. I just wanted to give you a little bit of an idea of, our intention is to do a first-class. I know a lot of times people hear duplexes, and they can think something negative. But I mean, we're planning on doing something that'll be, each unit would be well over a million dollars. So the aesthetics and everything will be very important to us. Regarding Councilmember Lettsa's comments on the variance, that was something that we considered. However, and I think he even made the point for me, my hardship, which obviously cannot be monetary, would be, my hardship would be the code, which I don't know that I could actually claim that as a hardship for a variance. With regard to the questions in the rainwater and things like that, yeah, we would still have to meet all that. The other thing I wanted to point out too is that in any type of multifamily zoning, Architectural Review Board has the ability to enforce changes that they want to see. And single-family, they can only make suggestions that can be accepted by the applicant or not. But I think in multifamily, so they do have some power here to make sure that this looks good and is done right. And then just lastly, I'm a resident of Kirkwood. I live over on Van Buren. I built a new house there about 10 years ago. I redeveloped the house, the historic house that's at the corner of Taylor and Jefferson that was kind of in disrepair, fixed that up and sold that to the gentleman who lives there now. And then also, we run the building, or I'm in the office and own part of the building that said Kirkwood and Washington. It's a three-story office building. And we definitely are proud citizens of Kirkwood. We want to make this a good project. And so anyway, and with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions you have.
Questions over on this side of the council? Mr. McLean?
I have a few, yes. More for Amy, I think. But, all right, so the citywide application is just for the text amendment?
Correct.
Says any RMM zoning?
The RMM zoning is just for this particular lot.
Right, but any future RMM?
Yes, the text amendment would.
So if another applicant came in front and wanted the, wanted RMM, they automatically would, and they get it, they'd automatically have this new?
This, yes, yes.
All right, and this is, I'll kind of refer to it as spot zoning in a way, because this is just applicable just to this particular?
Well, I mean, it's not really spot zoning. It's in line with the comprehensive plan. It's already, it's asking actually for a lesser intensive zoning than is already there.
Getting back to what Nancy was saying, you know, if this was in front of me as a board of adjustment variance, I kind of could just say, all right, well, we have two commercial projects on either side, and we have something behind it, so it kind of is in a unique situation opposed to in the middle of some other street where you just have residential all along the whole side, on both sides. So the question then to John would be, what kind of precedent are we setting going forward with this if we say, oh, this makes sense here because of the commercial or the condominiums on both sides?
It's really not precedential setting, except for you're now dealing with this, what I would characterize as a unique zoning category of RMM. We haven't dealt with many of them. See, I was right. We haven't dealt with many of them. We'll probably come across more of them in the future. But it's not spot zoning, and it's really not precedent-setting. You're amending the text to address an unusual situation because of the new zoning, what I characterize as a new zoning category of RMM. And it will be, the text amendment will be applicable to all other RMM properties.
Right, but then the specific zoning change amendment on 223 West Monroe, changing it to RMM?
Correct.
All right, again, I look at, okay, well, it makes sense in this case because of condominiums on both sides, but it doesn't make sense if there's residential everywhere else. So we're not, but we're not setting a precedent on that, and that's...
Particularly on rezonings, Mark? Absolutely not. Rezonings, you're supposed to look at the surrounding properties and how the rezoning fits overall.
That's, I mean, that addresses my big concern. And then the other concern, Nancy hit on this also, is the 29-foot driveway, commercial. If all of a sudden we said, well, you only have to have it 10 feet wide or whatever it is for residential, then you could have a larger structure on this property, which therefore you could then have a front-facing garage that could be larger and maybe within the existing.
And I'm not saying, I mean, I should back up. At 22 for a two-way drive aisle, you could do 12 and 12 on each side of the building for a one-way drive aisle. But I think when you get to a multifamily project, it's a little bit harder to work out with your neighbor when you're leaving and when they're leaving, and are they leaving a car in the driveway? You know, as opposed to, I have a detached garage, and if we have to shift cars, my husband and I can get out and move one car to the street and move another. But I think when you're talking about, you know, multifamily-type situations, it's a little bit more difficult.
So I have a shared driveway, so it's never, we have enough driveway space in the back to park. I'm just thinking that might be easier in this case, maybe not. Anyway, that's one of my questions I have. Thanks. I'm sorry, is that okay, Mayor?
Sure, absolutely.
We did look at different alternatives for maybe trying to get by the side of the building and park in the back. The other problem that we run into because of the width of the lot is that once you get to the back, the turnaround's almost impossible. So if you've only got, so if you've got a drive aisle that's coming down that's 10, 12 feet wide, that leaves you basically 10 or 12 feet. Once you get around the back, you can't really maneuver a car back in there and get into the garage is part of the problem too. The narrowness of the lot just creates problems with, you just, you'd be back and forth, back and forth, back and forth, trying to get back into the garage. So it's just, creates a very difficult situation, so even with the side drive aisles.
All right. Hearing no further discussion, this public hearing is now closed.
No, Mayor, we...
Sorry, sorry, sorry.
Comments from the public?
Oh, yes. We now move for comments from the public. Jessica, has anyone completed a card to speak regarding this proposal?
Yes, Mayor and council, there is one request from Jack Davis.
Oh, okay. Anything else you wanted to add, Jack? Great, thank you. All right. Any further comments or questions from anybody? Okay. Now, hearing no further discussion, this public hearing is now closed. The bill will be on the November 21st council meeting agenda for first reading consideration. Okay, thank you. Now, at this time, the council will recess to conduct a second public hearing regarding a request for a zoning map amendment from R5 to RMM for 2023 West Monroe Avenue. Mr. Hassel?
I would offer into the record for this public hearing all of the exhibits that were previously identified in the prior public hearing, as well as the comments from Amy, the discussion with Mr. Davis, the comments and questions from the city council. And as a result of that, there should be no further part of the record, except again, Mayor, I'd recommend that you ask if anybody in the audience wants to speak specifically to this public hearing, which is a zoning map amendment, rezoning the property from R5 to RMM.
Before we do that, should I ask council if they have any questions on this?
Should. The issue, again, I'll just remind council, the discussion that we had is exactly the same discussion that we had in the prior public hearing, because we combined the two of them.
Jessica, are there any residents that wish to speak on this proposal? No, okay. Hearing no further discussion, this public hearing is now closed. This bill will also be on the November 21st meeting agenda for first reading. Now we'll move on to public comments.
The public comments portion of the meeting is an opportunity for the city council to listen to comments from citizens. It is not a question-and-answer session, and the city council will not respond to comments or answer questions during this period. The mayor may refer any matter brought up to the city council to the chief administrative officer or city clerk of action as needed.
Very good. Jessica, has anyone filled out a comment card who wishes to make a public comment?
Yes, Mayor and council, there is a request from Sandra James.
Hi. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I have a couple of concerns. I'm relatively back in the city of Kirkwood again, where I've been out for five years in Denver and came back. I've had some issues with some of the neighbors disposing of their dog DCs and the rain disposable around the street corners there. And then their dogs are bigger dogs, and they don't always contain them. They're like 125 to 150 pounds. And some of the other neighbors around in the neighborhood don't always have fences or leashes on their dogs. And so they go out and come out and after that. And I know, I worked for the city of Olivet, and we had tags and everything for... the pets. If you had a pet, you had to register it every year and there was a fee for that. And that's also a way that you can keep a better control over the animals here, but it also would be a revenue generating aspect for the city of Kirkwood. You know, it's just something, one of the things to look at. And with the dog tags and the dogs and the parking that I'm at, I'm at the Harrison Square condo association, so that's where I live. And the parking spots there and the people that, some of the owners or some of the other people that may have that, they drive F-250s in their, in their trucks and everything. And the parking is just not big enough. And they said as long as they're in the white lines, that there's nothing they can do about it. And the police have come out for it and they said, we can't force them to move their vehicle. So. And the other thing, I think there was one other thing on there. But I do have another one for just something for the city council members to look at, is to look at your workforce and how you can contain some of your expenses. You can go into the older population, because they don't have, they will not need some of the insurance things that you are putting out money at. And then your, your aggregate for the future years will be down because of, so your premiums will be down, so it will cost less. I just don't know if that's something that you've thought about it or not. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. James. Jerry Beidenstein? Hello?
The opportunity. I wanted to thank and commend the street department. They've been working in our neighborhood. And I'm telling you, they're the nicest people, the most accommodating contractors. And I know that we just passed this transportation sales tax, which is fantastic. But don't overlook those folks, because they really are committed to doing a good job and to not disturbing the neighborhood in doing it. They've. I actually thought about, the first time I came and talked before this group was when they repaired the street in front of my house. That was a long time ago. But in either case, they, they did a great job. That's number one. Number two, I heard mention of planting trees on Saturday. The one thing I didn't say is that everybody is invited to come partake. And we'll be at Kirkwood Park at 8:30 in the morning and you can stay as long as you want. We're going to hold the rain off. According to John Hessel. Hold the rain off until the trees all get planted and we have the picnic. And then it'll rain and water them in. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Beidenstein. And we'll make sure that Mr. Kruger passes on the compliments to our street department. Okay, now we'll move into the consent. The consent agenda. Is there a motion and a second?
Motion, second.
Okay. Any discussion about the consent agenda? No? Okay. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, the consent agenda has passed. Yeah, John's. Okay, we'll move into unfinished business. I believe we have two items.
Well, there, there's nothing listed on the agenda, however, it's my understanding that Councilmember Reiniker is going to propose a motion for reconsideration. And if I'm not mistaken, that Councilmember Jaxettek has a different motion for reconsideration of a different piece of legislation. That should be taken up now after the unfinished business, which is non, but prior to the new business.
And do we need a motion to do that? No?
I'm going to make one.
Mayor, you're making a motion, okay.
I'm going to make a motion to bring Bill 11052 to the floor for reconsideration.
I'll second that.
Okay. All in favor of bringing the motion back to the floor, say aye. Opposed, no? Alright.
Copies of the bill.
And now we have discussion?
So you basically all have that again?
Oh, we need.
No, that's perfect. Already read the bill. Ask David.
Okay.
David's getting a comment.
I've got it right.
One, here you go.
David, would you please read the bill again for us?
Here, oh, sorry, you stood being down there. Bill 11052, this is in ordinance, changing the zoning from B1 neighborhood, commercial district, to R5 multifamily residential district on the property known as 430 South Clay Avenue, being in approximately 0.52 acre site on the east side of South Clay Avenue and directing such change in the zoning district map.
Motion?
Motion to approve? Motion to approve?
Second.
Okay, okay. Now, discussion.
Okay, I'd like to, the reason I wanted to bring this to reconsideration, I think I should start this. We voted on this last, our last meeting, there were only five of us here, as part of it. And as soon as we voted and we voted against it, I sat here the rest of the meeting, I was trying to, I made a mistake in what I did. My thinking was kind of backward. I was thinking, one and a half cars, parking spots, that's not enough, you know? And then as I sat here longer, I thought, well, if somebody wants to buy a place with one and a half spaces, that's their business, not mine. You know, that's up to the market to decide, the buyer's market. So I immediately regretted what I'd done and I think it was a mistake and that's why I wanted to have it brought back to all seven of us.
Very good. Okay, additional questions?
Just a comment?
Or comments, yeah.
Probably to no one's surprise, I am not in support of rezoning this property. And, you know, I don't want to talk about when I was a kid going to school, but when I was on the council previously, you know, we didn't see the developer requests for rezoning and code changes like we're seeing now. And, you know, it's happening a lot in my five months back on. Again, which is not something I experienced my previous eight years. My concern is that we're, and again, I know I'm not going to use the right terms and some of these, I'm not going to be a lot, you know, it's not best to say it that way. But I really think we're beginning to see piecemealing of the zoning and code changes. Whenever a developer is going to lobby the city for their particular piece of property. And I know it's not necessarily spot zoning or zoning creep, I'm not going to use those words. But I am concerned about these zoning and code changes, one piece at the time. While we continue to struggle with stormwater runoff problems, loss of green space and trees, road safety issues, which we are grappling with the increase, or maybe not increase, but motor vehicle accidents, pedestrian bicyclists being hit. And just in general, our aging infrastructure needs. So as I have, and again, my return, being really concerned about infrastructure as a priority and public safety issues that are, I believe are, are becoming more problematic. I hope somehow we can meet those challenges before we continue, before this big push to develop or overdevelop, especially downtown Kirkwood, takes hold. I mean, I'm, I'm concerned as we look at this piece of property, we can just go one piece of property, north on Clay, turn right on Monroe, go left on Kirkwood Road to the train tracks. And I don't know that, I mean, it's all within whatever plans we have out there. But I do have these other concerns that I really would like us to throw into this comprehensive plan and make it a priority. So again, you know, I don't know that it's going to stop. I don't know if it's going to continue at this piece. But my concern is just one piece at a time without addressing the bigger picture. And so I'm not in support of it.
Any additional comments?
Well, unless, Mark, you want to say something? Well, I was going to say is that I actually voted for it. The area there on South Clay and West Woodbine behind the Woodbine Center, to me, well, right now, it's what used to be single-family homes that are turned into commercial space, which is a transition zone, a good transition zone between the commercial and the single families up to the west there. So, I mean, with our master plan and our desire to increase density and have maybe previous petitioner was talking about million-dollar gorgeous townhouses, but with this R5 change, proposed, or requested change, you would have multi-family, so presumably additional units, smaller units that might be, I would hope, more affordable. So to provide more affordable, attainable housing, I could actually see, you know. And to Gina's, you know, forecast that more of those properties along there might go to R5 or RMM, I, you know, I don't know. But I think, you know, I still think this is a good thing for, for that particular area right there, so I'm for it.
Well, the reason why I voted against it was because, one, we didn't have a full council up here. And I think that's important to do that. And I know we can't do that all the time and I understand that. The other was that we look at the whole plan for that whole street and not just pick one piece at a time. But I did take some time and go down and talk to Jonathan and had a nice, a better understanding of what's going on with this piece of property and what the vision is going forward. So I'm in favor of moving forward with this piece of property this way.
This piece, I was absent at the last, I just wanted to ask, is any, the stormwater issue and how does that relate to this with the number of units and what have you?
So on our larger commercial projects, we would send that to MSD first, or whatever they would want to do, have done with the stormwater. If they decide not to impose stormwater on this particular piece of property, then it would come under our stormwater ordinance.
And is it, are stormwater ordinance the same for a residential piece of property? Is it as for?
Yes, I mean, it's the same trigger of either increasing 1,000 square feet of impervious surface or if you go above 25% impervious surface on the lot. So you would get credit for what's already there, but then the change.
Okay.
I just wanted to tell Al, thanks for voting the wrong way, because you were able to motion for reconsideration.
Good way to look at an air.
Well, you know, and I'm, I'm in favor of this particular place and location, but Gina's concern, I wholeheartedly agree with her. We got to be careful of where we're going in the big picture, but in this case, I think it makes all the sense in the world.
One of the questions that, that I have, just for this and, and future, how much can our police force as it is take? How much can our fire department take? I mean, is there something that could be provided to us so that we know what the capacity is? And where, when we get too far down the road or our parks, how, how much parkland do we need in order to accommodate?
Our infrastructure.
Yeah.
Our infrastructure that's there.
Yes. Oh, how can we get that kind of information?
I would say for larger developments, especially when you start looking at things that are surrounding this. I know near it, there's the Clay Oak condominiums. Whenever you have new, larger developments that add a large volume of people to an area, that's something that should be under consideration as we approach those things. And we can get you those figures.
This, this particular proposal does not put us into that.
No, it shouldn't have impact to our, our current.
Is the applicant here? Would you all care to say anything?
We need to do is, yeah. Yeah, we need a motion and a second.
Oh.
So we need a motion and a second.
Don't move.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, and then an all in favor.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Sorry, I'm still learning all these rules. How do you do?
Demanding.
Being Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
And thanks for reconsidering our project. Just, I wanted to talk a little bit about kind of what the project was about. I know we talked to a few people about what they thought this project entails. I think Amy kind of showed the size of what the lot entails. And I think after we take kind of what the front setbacks are, the side setbacks and the rear setbacks, I think at the very most, this project allows us to do about eight townhomes. These are going to be high-end townhomes that I think would fit very well with the downtown Kirkwood setting. And the downtown setting kind of looks for more dense population, which I think this would fit pretty well with. Brought my star realtor over, she's, I'm a Kirkwood resident as well. I live right up at Jefferson, by the farmers market. And I've done a few projects in Kirkwood as well. She sold all my projects all around town, so I brought her along just as a, as a support system.
Yeah. Okay. So anyway, I work for Janet McAfee Real Estate. It's very, you know, it's a locally owned real estate company. And I've been working with Leonard since 2018. He just does really nice work and it is affordable. So that's what I think, we, we work together well. You know, there are a lot of homes that are, you know, 1.2, you know, even 2 million, but we're going to try and make it more affordable for, for the Kirkwood resident and it's at a great location. So that's what our intent is. And, but I wanted to stress that he does, just does really nice work. So just very good quality and excited to hopefully move the project forward and, and work on, work on more projects going forward. Anyway, thank you for your time. Really thank you, Al, for bringing it back up. Thank you very much.
Anybody questions? Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you.
For being here.
On the.
Yeah, and it's a.
There's a motion to approve.
Yeah. Just said, yeah, another follow-up comment to yours. Again, I think, you know, my concern continues to be the bigger picture in that how much we can get done before we continue to see this expansion, one way or the other. I mean, I think ways of looking at it, you know, when we're looking at households, both our police and fire department cannot, I can't imagine them having the resources that they need now as we continue to look at the James and some of the bigger buildings, the more households. And we have the same number of police or fire capacity that we had with, you know, 1,000 less households. So again, how we look at that data, just so that we know that as we continue to grow and develop and increase this urbanization of our downtown, with the urbanization comes public safety issues, stormwater runoff, how much green space we're going to maintain down there. And I don't want us to lose sight of that, because I do think we're going to see, you know, very creative people coming and wanting to continue to build, which should be good if we consider the bigger picture a little bit. I think David said he would get that for us, so we can start looking at that. Yep, okay. Alright. Okay, so if there's no more questions, we'll go ahead and vote on this first reading. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Aye, would I, nay, would I say nay? I guess nay, sorry, I.
That was okay.
Okay, and then this will be on the next.
Uh huh, so this past first reading?
Past first reading and we'll have it on the November 17th.
Yep, 21st.
21st meeting. Okay, thank you. Alright, now we have.
It's my understanding we have another motion for reconsideration.
I didn't want to be outdone by Al. I would like to bring forth resolution 146, 2024 to the floor for reconsideration. Okay.
Second?
I'll pass it.
Solar power. Solar power.
A resolution accepting the bid of Perdello Windfield, I said that right? A resolution accepting the bid of Perdello Windfield, I said that right? The amount of not to exceed $1,687,500 annually for the purchase of capacity for the electric department for a term of eight years, beginning June 2025, and authorizing director, authorizing and directing the director of procurement to issue a purchase order.
Okay.
A second. We need a second to bring.
Oh, we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor of the motion?
All in favor of the motion for consideration, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay?
Yeah.
Nay.
All right, the motion carries, and now we will have discussion. Okay. Lead it off. Yes, please do. All right, again, like Al, reflected a little bit after we took this vote, and, and more of it's around, you know, getting information to, to a level that I think I would be more comfortable making decisions in terms of our electric department, and there was an addendum to that resolution, that was the GDS DEC, that we never had a chance to go through it, to get information from it, understand it, and it was attached to this resolution. We've had some information from the electric department and the consultant group in July, and I know we're building capacity and need and purchase power, and Mark was very generous and responded to some of my questions, but it just leads to more questions, and I just hope that we can start getting some real time to understand, because as we all are making decisions for this community, I would like to have opportunities to really look and understand what we're doing within the electric department at a little different level. Again, back when I was on the council eight years ago, you know, the electric department was complex, but since I've returned, you know, we've got solar, wind, we've got, you know, back then we had wood chips and Prairie State, you know, so there's a lot more complexity to what we're doing now, and I just would like us to have time to, to, to have an opportunity to really understand it, not at the level that we're going to run the department, but just in my communication with Mark, I, I'm beginning to understand capacity, and I probably am not right, but I'm going to say it anyway, it's really, it's, you know, we support, when we buy capacity, my understanding is that is to support the operation of the plant, to make sure that the plants stay up and running, and that's not our energy, but that's not our electric. So, in Mark's answer to me, capacity is a number on paper and is related to the solar farm size, so we're required to buy capacity to make sure the system has power plants reserved to deliver to the grid. After fulfilling our capacity requirements, we can then buy and sell energy. So, in the contracting, we have capacity that I'm assuming we purchased for solar at 37.5 megawatts, Prairie State at 25, the, the wind at 29.2, and MISO auction at 5. So, it looks like we've purchased 96.7 megawatts of capacity, but that's not our electricity. So, you know, as we delve into these contracts, these purchases, what are we buying and, and what are we supporting in terms of the operations of the plants? What's our electric cost? I know we play transmission charges to Amaran because they deal with the transmission, so a lot of these are those ancillary charges that really are not the cost of our electricity or our energy, and just having an opportunity to understand that, because we're getting capacity contracts, I understand we're buying electricity in blocks on a hour-to-hour, moment-to-moment base, but that's very different than this other component from my novice understanding. So, again, it's just to have an opportunity to say, we, we really need, I would like to be able to spend some time, understanding at a higher level what that means, bringing the consultant in to help us, you know, elevate our ability as these things come, or at least my ability, to know what I'm really committing our hard-earned dollars to, and even one of the questions, you know, I think Al brought up last time, is solar going to be more expensive? Yes, but in the big scheme of things, maybe not, but, you know, because I asked the question about, since solar would be more expensive to purchase, do you anticipate, and this was to Mark, that we may have to raise rates to maintain our transfer of dollars to the general funds and increase the reserves to needed levels? And then it was no, the solar capacity would be less than the MISO capacity, so we'll be fine. So, you know, I need to, then I go, well, what's the capacity, and, you know, and again, we also use our electric, you know, profits or whatever, however you want to call it, to support general fund and to support, I mean, to, you know, add to the reserves and, and, you know, hopefully be able to maintain our system over time. So, lots of questions came out, you know, and Mark, it was, you know, he answered them, but then I just, of course, have more questions, and I don't know that, I didn't expect that this would be the forum by which we have those conversations, but I also wanted to put it on the table to say, I do hope we, we get a, at least I get a better understanding of what it is when this legislation comes through. I do have to say, it was, you know, the additional deck that came along with that and not having a work session opportunity to go through that was somewhat dis.
Okay, before we get into further discussion, we missed, we need a motion in a second to approve the resolution. No, you're fine on your first motion, no, but before we get into further discussion, we need a motion in a second, this is if we had a resolution under new business to read, to approve the resolution as read, then we can open it up for more discussion, so.
Motion.
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 Okay, very good, okay. Now we can have a discussion. All right. Okay. Sorry. No, it was my fault, anything further? That was my entry, no, I think that covers. All right.
And that, my comments are, we come in here, it's, it's similar to what Gina's, so we come in here and we're, we're asked to approve $1.6 million annually, and I don't think anybody up here understands what we're approving, I know I don't, I mean, it's all, we, we're putting this all on Mark, fearing that there's nothing else going on, but I want to understand what's going on. What do we, what are we spending the money on? And then, it's 37 megawatts, we have 25 megawatts of Prairie Farm, we have to have 55 megawatts a day. Now, I'd like Gina, can we have a couple hours where we sit down with Mark and ask questions, and answers that we can understand? He's going to have to dumb it down for me. That's my hesitation.
Okay.
I don't think we're going to be, get an explanation in 10 minutes, Amy's still in there.
I think we have to do Robert's rule.
Nope, not for staff.
Oh, not for staff member, okay.
You can come up, Mark.
You could come up, Mark.
That's what I was just going to say, have Mark come up, and then, and then I have a question for Mark on this.
And I, yeah, I'd be glad to answer any questions, yeah.
So, here, oh, I don't want to jump in front of anybody.
Sure.
So, if we table this tonight and continue this, is this going to change anything for you immediately on our power grid feeds and all that, and I may be speaking a little dumb down there again, too?
Yes.
So?
Yes, the answer is yes.
Okay. Can you explain a little further with that for me as well?
Transactions, they are time and date sensitive with commodity pricing, and are confirmed by counterparties after council action. If you want to change what has been done, you can affect the price of the portfolio that we would expect to have, because that commodity price would change associated with that transaction, and there are other counterparties that are part of that transaction that have already confirmed that transaction as well.
Understand.
That includes some other cities that I'm not going to name now.
Right, I understand.
Because it'd be inappropriate, but these transactions are time and date sensitive with pricing in time and date sensitive, because commodities have those types of price fluctuations in them. We have avoided significantly some volatility in the market by having this transaction done at the time that we have done it, so to undo this transaction could prevent us from the protection that we've had from the volatility and make the transaction something that might not be available to us in the future. I would also suggest, when you don't show good faith when transactions are confirmed with counterparties, they do not like doing business with you in the future, that would be a very big mistake to make.
Mark, have you confirmed this transaction based upon the prior vote two weeks ago?
Absolutely.
So, the legal consequences of now reconsidering?
Yes.
And perhaps backing out of that confirmation are grave, is that fair?
Yes.
I guess my point to the city council, if you have questions, all the city council is provided with the agenda, six days, sometimes seven days in advance, when you have questions, don't hesitate to call staff through the chief administrative officer and have those questions addressed before the council meeting. If you don't get your answers to the council during the council meeting, there's a simple process called a motion to continue, and to allow you to gather more information. I can assure you that staff is not trying to keep any bit of information from you at all, and I will also join with both Gina and Al, this stuff confuses me, I don't understand it, I wouldn't be intelligent enough to ask the right questions, but to the extent that you, people that are smarter than me have questions to ask, ask them.
Okay. My, you know, and again, I, you know, my intent, and I kind of suspected, you know, this is kind of already in process and there's a downside to it.
It's passed in the process, it's been confirmed.
But I do want to reiterate, again, you know, we have the Parks Director, we have a lot of people that come to us and give us information at, at more aggressive level. If, you know, if the best way to work within the electric department is that I really have to hone in and, and, you know, ask the que, I mean, I, I just like a forum by which we can get more information before the critical decisions are being made, and, and right now, it's kind of an understanding of your capacity purchase, your electric purchase, your cost of that, and I don't want to necessarily have to wait until we have a contract pending to understand the implications of that contract. So, I get that this is, we're already, you know, the, you know, the dog, the horse is out of the barn or whatever, but again, I, I just am trying to urge us to be able to get information ahead of time, because when you walk away, you have more questions and have a chance to come back. That's what you were talking about with regards to continuance.
Do a continuance here, so then he would know.
But to have a presentation, if a presentation is out there, you know, I, this is not the forum by which we do presentations.
It is.
To have him, to.
Presentations always have them.
Do a deck up there, okay. I'm just used to coming to the work session, but if we can do them here, okay. Mr. McLean?
I'm glad you guys discussed the legal consequences, because that was the reason I didn't want to reconsider it, but having said that, is it, can you do a one-minute summary of, of what we entered into, one point, a contract for 1.6 million for the purchase of capacity, so we, we, are we obligated 1.6 million today? Give that money for this power, or is it, is it monthly? And then what is the capacity we get today and for the next 364 days?
The short answer is you obligated already for something that you will begin to pay in June, that is the $1.6 million annually for a capacity that you are required to have by June. The reason you do that is because you have to have a resource adequacy plan provided to your market grid participants and all of your participants and the operators by, after March, and what you've also done is, and again, I, I'm getting into some more details of the answer to your question, but again, you've obligated because you've, you've attempted to avoid volatility that will begin, you know, in the new season.
And I agree with all that.
And so, yes, contractually, if you want to talk about legally?
No, we're talking about capacity.
Okay.
So, July of 2025 rolls around.
Yes.
And.
June.
June.
June, June or July.
June, June 2025.
Let's say July or August.
Right, the MISO season, right.
We have 110 degrees in Kirkwood for 30 days in a row, everyone's using electricity galore. What does capacity mean, and what's that mean in this particular instance with this kind?
In order to play in the market, you must purchase capacity. By definition, every market participant that is able to buy or sell energy must buy capacity that covers their peak for the entire year, for, on a monthly basis, actually, there's, there's a definition that's associated with an hourly basis, but in order to play, you must buy capacity. What capacity does is it makes sure that the amount of power plants are available within the grid to supply all grid participants, so by market rule, in order for us to qualify by June the first, we have to have capacity and show that we have capacity in advance, and so that's what we've done. And in addition to that, again, there are multiple ways to buy capacity, some are through the bid as we committed to, and again, I apologize for being over eager about providing information to you, what you were provided for the resolution was the actual bid results. They were confidential, but we tried to provide bid information as we typically do so that you know that there is more than one bidder, and that you know that the prices are competitive, and that we are getting the best deal, which is what we did, but bottom line is, what we did is, we purchased capacity ahead of time so that we avoided one of the other opportunities that you would have to buy capacity. Again, you could do it through a bid process that you commit yourself, or you could buy capacity at the MISO capacity auction. I fast forward to what we know to be happening in the market today, and that is, we know the MISO market capacity auction has significant price volatility, we needed to avoid it, we are going to need to avoid it for a significant amount of time, because, as you know, Rush Island retired.
Right.
And you will see there are other power plants that will be retiring, and there are no other new plants that will come online, even though there have been some announcements. So, what we've done is we, as we do with summertime block power, avoided volatility in the capacity market so that we could make sure that we didn't see price spikes that are going to be moving forward. So, again, that, what, what we did with that transaction was very favorable, I even got news today that I could, I'm not going to give it to you, but the, we've avoided some significant volatility, our other counterparties that were in that transaction have done the same thing, it was the wise thing to do, and it was the prudent thing, and that's why we're able to keep that expenditure amount associated with a wholesale power within that range that we see that's in the neighborhood of 29 to 30 million, and instead of having fluctuations, and in addition to that, obviously use cash so that we don't have to raise rates. We've done the right thing to keep from having to raise rates, and we've done it in a way that is time and price sensitive, and to unravel that takes away the protection that we have, well, I mean, that's what's a motion.
Well, I know there's a motion, but, and, and I don't, I don't want to unravel, and I think what you're, what you're doing is great, and I'm with John on this one, you're, what, it's, it's above my head, so, and so maybe you answered this question, but I didn't understand if you did, capacity is, is that, that's a defined term?
Yes.
And, and how many, what is?
It has, it has to do with the amount of energy that you would use as a maximum in any given hour, right? It's like a battery.
So, if in 2025, we have 110 degree weather.
Yes.
For 10 days straight, our capacity is going to increase?
No, it won't change, it'll peak at a particular hour on a single day, and then you will be obligated to reserve that amount of capacity for the entire year, and that would be in the neighborhood of about 56 megawatts.
Usage.
Our usage will increase.
The energy, that's a different, I'm, I'm saying too diff- The energy, that's a different, I'm, I'm saying two different words now. When I say capacity and megawatts, that's like a battery sitting there not moving anything.
Our usage--
Energy--
Our, our usage--
Will fluctuate on hourly--
At the temperature.
Yes, yes.
So what does that then do to this contract that you've entered into?
Nothing.
Does nothing.
This is a separate contract. This is a contract for capacity and not energy.
Okay, so, so part of the hedging that you do is to know that if we have these really, really hot months, we're going to have, our price is already fixed in.
For energy, when we do summertime block transactions, that is correct.
Are energy different than usage?
No, that is the same in terms of, well, when you talk about electricity usage, electricity usage in, in layman's terms is, is, is energy itself, but not capacity, which is a res-- a reserved amount of power plant availability that's out there.
If our usage goes up in the city of Kirkwood 50% because it's so hot outside, our, our, our costs to get that energy into the system go up because, or it's going to stay the same because you've entered into this contract?
That's a different, that's a different answer to that.
I guess that's where I'm trying to get at.
No.
It's a semester or a couple--
Right.
Right.
But, but the, the answer, the answer to that is no. If, if you use more energy and if your peak does not change, that's, again, capacity is not peak an hourly amount. You could use more energy throughout the year, but, but have the same peak every year. And the reason for that is because on an hourly basis, you may use more or less, but on that hottest day, when everybody's got everything on, that number can be the same for that hot day that is the hottest day every year. And I'll give you a good example of why that can work. In Kirkwood, you're landlocked, right? You have very limited, uh, land to do redevelopment. And so over the many years, you have not seen any changes in your peaks that you experienced when you had the hospital. I fast for, I, you know, I reverse, I go back to July the sixth, July the 18th, when GDS was here, and we talked about the load being down. I don't know if you remember that conversation, and he said the load had been going down. And, and, and what he had, was trying to allude to, he, he couldn't get all the details in at the time, was when we were at the hospital, uh, when the hospital was over to the Aberdeen site and we had energy there back in those days, 66 megawatts was your peak, 66 megawatts. And now you see peaks in the neighborhood of 55. So because of the way you've got the school system out there and you've got other buildings out there and you didn't have the hospital, your peak would still be down to 55, something in that neighborhood. However, maybe some people are going to be charging electric vehicles. That's going to add nighttime load, maybe load in the evening when people go home, maybe a little bit more than you used to have. So you could see more energy, but you wouldn't see an excursion over the 55 megawatts. And so instead of talking a little bit about capacity, sometimes we talk about, do we get to 225 gigawatt hours a year at Kirkwood? And that's a different conversation, but you can actually use more energy and still keep your capacity peak the same. And again, we're probably spending a lot more time on this than we should because the key, I'm, I'm sorry?
Because you're spreading it out.
Yes, we spread it out, that's correct. And you use it at different times.
Still there.
Right, yeah. Well, I mean, I don't want to lose the tagline here. Again, the tagline is, is the transaction was done to avoid capacity market volatility in the MISO auction. We did that, and we were aggressive at getting a product to do that before other people got to that product. And remember, we're talking about, can you go out, can you find capacity before somebody else gets it? And we got it so that's, we gobbled it up, myself and my other counterparties. So before somebody else could get it, we got it, and we avoided the market excursions that we're going to see in the MISO capacity auction in Zone 5. I probably shouldn't have said all of that, but that's what happened.
To make Mark's night go better, now, John, can you help me this? I, I would remove, again, I wanted to put it out on the table. Can I remove, like, take away my motion for reconsideration? Or should we just vote it out?
You cannot because we voted on the motion for reconsideration.
All right.
Okay.
It's okay. I think this is good.
Yeah, I mean, I wanted the conversation.
I, I absolutely agree. And again, I agree from this, and we, Al and I talked about this this morning. The more people understand the ability that we have to have a flexible portfolio and turn those savings back to the customers, the better we explain why it's a good reason to have your own utility. I know it's difficult. It takes a lot of time. And, you know, I've been doing this for 40 years. There, there's a lot to it. But the more we can, and again, I think it's my fault because if I can't explain it in a short amount of time, then that, that's my, my fault.
And that's what I think--
And I should be able to do that, and, and we've been trying to do that. But the more people can understand what's going on, I think the better they're going to understand that Kirkwood Electric is good for Kirkwood. And, and they'll see that these products that we're buying are purchased for the advantage of Kirkwoodians.
Okay, all right. I think we'll go ahead, no, we'll go ahead and take a vote. And it needs--
Do a roll call.
Okay, we need a roll call on the resolution.
Yes, Mayor Gibbons?
Which way?
In favor of the resolution or not?
Yes, this is a roll call if we would do any other resolution.
The original one.
This is--
In favor of the original one, yes. Sorry, I wasn't--
Councilmember Litzow?
Yes.
Councilmember McLean?
Yes.
Councilmember Reinaker?
Yes.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Yes.
Councilmember Zimmer?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacksetic?
Okay, very good. Thank you. Now we're going to, uh, thank you, Mark. Thank you very much for the explanation as much as you could. We'll move to new business, Bill 11053.
Mayor and council. Mayor and council, this is an ordinance amending the provisions of the municipal code, Chapter 25 zoning and subdivision by changing the use-specific standards for the personal and commercial service used in the B2 central business district.
Thank you. Do I have a motion and a second to accept Bill 11053 for first reading approval?
Motion.
Second.
Good.
Okay. Questions, discussion? Okay. Um, noth-- nothing? Okay, all in favor of the first reading approval of Bill 11053, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Bill, Bill 11053 has passed first reading approval. Uh, Bill 11054?
Mayor and council, this is an ordinance amending the Kirkwood Code of Ordinances, Chapter 4, Animals and Fowl, Section 4-3, reserved by imposing a prohibition on the supplemental feeding of deer.
Do I have a motion and accept, a second to accept Bill 11054 for first reading approval?
So moved.
Questions or comments on the bill? Senator McLean?
I, I'm not really, I wasn't here for the last meeting and what this was discussed, so I apologize. I know deer is a problem, but is this something that we can control? I'm not, how do we enforce this? And are we just putting something on the books to make it look good? And so I'm not, I mean, my gut is, my gut is no on this just because I'm not sure what it does to help us out.
Thank you. Questions down here, Councilmember Litzow?
Right, so, um, some background on this. Since I started on council in 2012, it wasn't long afterwards that I had residents down on South Guyer who were complaining about too many deer camping out, having babies in their yard, eating all of their landscaping, um, issues with, with actual crashes with an automobile and a deer or near misses, um, all kinds of just various issues. And, um, in, we didn't, it was suggested at the time by then Chief Administrative Officer, Mike Brown, that we could institute, um, a supplemental feeding ban. It never went that far. Deer complaints about deer, um, and I think 2012 may have been a trigger because we had a drought and it seemed, at least from my observation, that the deer kind of came northward looking for, you know, new browsing land. So they jumped Big Bend and kind of moved northward and never really went back. We continued having, um, constant complaints from a few residents who would actually come and speak to council here in the, in the meetings. We responded and actually commissioned an official deer count in 2018, which showed that, yeah, we had a deer problem mostly west of Guyer, um, in between Guyer and 270. But again, we didn't feel like we could really do that much about it. The supplemental, a ban on supplemental feeding was not really proposed, or I don't remember the details about that. Obviously, we didn't, or by code, couldn't have residents, you know, with, um, firearms and, and our power, you know, power bows going around and, and, um, culling deer. So we, we supported the whole, um, annual deer culling that Powder Valley has because they do have a fairly large deer population down there. Over the years, to my knowledge, they've only, um, culled maybe two or three dozen at most. I spoke to an agent down at Powder Valley today about a question, and I asked her how many deer they got la-- last weekend in the managed hunt, and her answer was eight. So I don't think that that's going to do very much to help with the overpopulation of deer in the surrounding area. The city of DePere, uh, adopted an ordinance, I believe in 2019, that prohibits supplemental, uh, feeding of deer and certain other wildlife. The city of Chesterfield just adopted an ordinance against supplemental feeding of deer and Canada geese. There's chronic wasting disease is a serious neurological disease that is prevalent in the state of Missouri. We, just this year, the Missouri Department of Conservation added 18 new counties in their, um, CWD management zone where hunters, um, on certain days have to either, I mean, this gets kind of gory, but they have to, they have to take parts of the deer or the entire deer to a station for testing for this chronic wasting disease, which is highly transmissible. It's deadly for hoofed animals, especially deer, elk and that, whatever. We mostly have a problem with whitetail deer up here. If the county is in a chronic wasting, has chronic wasting, it is an immediate ban on supplemental feeding of deer and of baiting deer, which is used by hunters in certain counties to attract them as they hunt and makes it easier to, you know, um, kill deer. So, um, in response to a recent yet another complaint about deer, um, a relatively new resident said he has several deer that, I mean, kind of a herd that comes through his property. My husband and another friend of ours who work with trees in the area said, well, that's because the previous homeowner actually had a trough and fed the deer. I do know that, I don't know what, how widespread it is right now, but we do have, or have in the past, we've had homeowners who, and they are kind of cute, especially the little guys, but they are also very damaging to landscaping. Um, and as I mentioned, the health of the deer population is, is a threat when CWD comes into St. Louis County. There's actually no reported cases of CWD right now, but I don't know if that's because hunting is more limited because we are more urbanized than other counties. But St. Charles County is, is in a management zone. Franklin County is in a management zone. Jefferson County as well, St. Genevieve County. There are multiple, multiple, um, cases of this disease in all of the surrounding counties. My guess, I'm just saying this, is that we either do have cases and they are unreported or it soon will be in St. Louis County. What can we do? Supplemental feeding of wildlife in general is not recommended by the Missouri Department of Conservation. They have a cute little brochure that says, please don't feed the wildlife. And one of the things that they show is whitetail deer. It changes natural feeding behavior, in turns wild animals into beggars. It creates conflicts with wild, wildlife. The healthy fear of humans is good for both wildlife and people when this fear is lost and animal, and animals see people as a free lunch. It may lead to aggressive behavior and conflicts with both wildlife and neighbors. Supplementally feeding deer, for example, um, the, the, the deer don't leave other sources alone. So that neighbor's landscaping suddenly looks really tasty for a deer that came for the corn that you have, you know, in a trough by your house. High concentrations of deer near a feeding site tend to heavily browse nearby vegetation as well. Neighbors of the person who feed the deer often experience worse landscape damage due to the supplemental feeding. So for a host of reasons, it's not a good idea. As to the enforceability, um, I would like to believe that Kirkwood citizens would want to do the best for their neighbors and wildlife, so they would voluntarily comply. But if you have a neighbor who refuses to comply, um, you could, I hate to say it, but you could complain and thereby, you know, assist with the enforcement. So, um, uh, we do have a high number of deer. We haven't had a count since 2018, um, but I can say anecdotally, Sunset Hills has, uh, 69 per square mile. I believe we have about, according to MDC, 32 per square mile in Kirkwood. A healthy number of deer is 15 to 20 deer per square mile. So they are a problem. I had two bucks fighting in my neighbor's front yard Monday night. So, and these, you know, these are bucks. They, they can be aggressive with humans. So, um, I'm just saying that, is this, you know, the end-all? Probably not, but I think it's a start. That's all.
Put it that way first. I gotta get my breath.
Mr. Zimmer?
Thank you. Uh, you know, over the years, and, uh, Councilmember Litzow, I, I appreciate this. I, I understand why we want to maybe try and do something. Over the years, we've had many residents complain to us. We had one resident that brought in dead vegetation and threw it at us right in front of this dais here.
Oh, wow.
Because he was so angry and upset. However, deer are not pets. They're not controlled. They wander all over the state of Missouri. I think it would be incredibly difficult, especially when we talk about increasing the population of Kirkwood and stretching our resources of our first responders, to somehow try and enforce this. I think, I think attempting to enforce this would be very difficult, the more that I thought about it. If, if somebody was feeding, they could easily, you know, move that and then move it right back. I think it would be very, very difficult to try and enforce this. I also think that even if we could control somehow what I consider, you know, wild animals or nature, even if we could cull all of the deer population in Kirkwood this weekend somehow, there's other deer in DePere, there's deer in Manchester, there's deer in Webster, all they have to do is walk into Kirkwood and the deer are back. I think, I think this is one of those items that will never be solved or fixed. I think it's part of nature. We're going to have it. I think we try and take actions where we can because in Kirkwood and in St. Louis County in general, we can't just have open hunts because there's too many people. We don't want to harm our-- We don't want to harm our neighbors. We don't want people to be hurt. But at the same time, you know, we try and do something about the population of deer, but it's difficult. It's, it's not easy. Like Councilmember Lizzo said, we only got eight. That's not that many. So I, I think this is not, this is one of those areas that, you know, the, the city council may not be able to permanently solve in, in the next 100 years of Kirkwood. I, I understand, you know, that we're trying to do something, but I think it would be very, very difficult for us to enforce when other issues, I just, I'm not sure how practically that would work. And would it even solve the problem of decreasing the deer population? I, I don't know if it would.
I've got a question for John. Could this, could this be a code?
Would be.
Code enforcement?
Oh, yeah. Well.
Kathy Hawkins and?
You could have code enforcement as well as the police department who handles code enforcement, yeah. And again, I'll just remind the council, this legislation is not about the culling of deer. I, I heard a lot of how Nancy explained that we have too many deer. I have deer in my yard all the time. I don't welcome them. I don't like them. But this is not about killing any animal, including deer. This is about putting a prohibition on someone intentionally feeding, in this case, deer. The issue that Mark, that you raised about enforcement, it's a real issue, to the extent that people are obvious about it, and they're actually putting out food to feed the deer, then we can enforce it. The difficulty that we will have and other cities have had is when I put my bird feeder out there and the deer help themselves to my bird feed, am I going to be guilty of this violation? And I hope the answer is no. Candidly, I quit putting out bird feed because of the deer we're getting. Exactly. So again, you run into that issue, and I've been here a long time. I've heard a lot about the deer. I can't emphasize enough, this is not about the culling of deer. And it has been alluded to, we can put up signs that say deer not welcome, but they're going to come.
Mr. Reiniger.
Yeah, I, I kind of agree with Mark Zimmer. I mean, we have a deer problem in Kirkwood. I, I lived in Sugar Creek. We do. There's no way around it. It's, there's some things that the city just can't do. And one of them is stopping the deer problem in Kirkwood. I mean, I don't know what it costs to write another ordinance, but there's got to be a cost to it. The police have to know about it. They've got plenty of things to do besides go down and see if somebody's bird feeder is a deer feeder. I mean, I'm going to vote against this.
I would propose, I would vote against this too, but I would propose that we consider increasing the number of days of hunting deer, getting with the St. Louis County, with DePere, Town and Country, or Minnesota colleges around us and see if we can coordinate something as a way. And I don't know what, what the laws and rules are, but I know we do.
State has it, but that's only at their, on the state property. We looked into this years ago, Mark, and the police department was rather adamant, I'll drop the rather. They were adamantly opposed to having a hunt, whether it's just with guns or just with bow and arrow for the fear that they'll miss the deer and hit an unintended target.
Don't we have something at Emmaneagle Park where they, every year?
Don't, not a hunt.
We don't, we don't have a?
My knowledge.
I know it's not there.
Powder Valley.
Powder Valley does.
Powder Valley does.
It's owned by the?
But that's Missouri.
Missouri Department of Conservation.
I mean, I think that's, whether or not that has a difference or not, that's, I would rather see an approach at that level than?
And they did. They took out?
They did. Last weekend, they got eight. In past years, they've gotten a couple, three dozen.
I think Town and Country's had, called deer hunts for a period of time. I don't know about DePere. I, I'm not aware of whether or not DePere tried.
That's the avenue I'd like to go as opposed to.
I saw where Wildwood, I was voting out there, and they have Wild Buffalo doing their deer management program. So Wildwood has a deer management program. They contracted out. So I don't know what all the services are. But that's a challenge out there because they've got a lot of space.
Sure. I've heard that as well. Gina, you're right.
I think White Buffalo did, or was the company that did our deer count in 2018. If, if and when CWD comes to St. Louis County, there will be an automatic ban on supplemental feeding and baiting of deer. All of the counties that have CWD right now, they come under that law. So how the, how the state enforces it, I have no idea. But, I mean, I mean, to Al's point about unenforceability and more laws, I mean, what we do, we are legislators. We kind of make laws. To me, I don't know if, if residents really need to be feeding deer when you have so many kinds of issues that homeowners feeding deer that that causes. And it just seems to me, you know, kind of in, an important incremental approach that might help prevent the, you know, deer from congregating and getting CWD if one comes in the neighborhood. And, and as I read, you know, out of the MDC brochure, that deer congregating at a feeding trough also tend to go to the neighbors. So those neighbors have a right to not have a herd of deer coming on their property because of a, you know, because of, of someone feeding the deer. They need to be, you know, wild animals. And I don't think, you know, to me, this is kind of a no brainer, and it could be complaint based to help with enforcement. So anyway.
Okay. I, I am in agreement with you that at least neighbors have a way of dealing with someone next door to them that's feeding the deer. So are there any additional comments?
Just one. I'm not sure if I think we should be encouraging neighbors to be reporting neighbors. I, I don't know. I, I think maybe it might be helpful to maybe educate our citizens that, hey, we don't recommend that you feed deer, and this is why. I think Mr. Hessel brought up an excellent point. If you're feeding birds, how are you going to stop the deer from eating the bird feed? I, again, it goes back to nature. It's really tough to control. It's, it's tough.
Well, right. Any other comments? Okay. All in favor of first reading approval of Bill 11054, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
All right. Can I have, so I can, can I have the hands of all in favor? Okay. Thank you.
All right. So it has failed. Okay, Bill 11054 has failed. Resolution 1512024.
Mayor and council, this is a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor to enter into a third amended and restated wholesale distribution service agreement with Ameren for substation transmission service upgrades for an additional $3,087,18 per month for a new total monthly amount of $77,196 for a total spend of $926,352 beginning in fiscal year 2027.
Do I have a motion in second to accept Resolution 1512024 as read?
Second.
Okay. Discussion and comments?
I do, I do have kind of a quick question. We passed something September 5th. Then since that, so it's been October, two months, Ameren's made upgrades. And something, Mark, that we just, I mean, we didn't know about this at the time, or it's two years. I understand the one from, from 2021. That makes sense, even a year ago, but two.
Oh, yeah. We've known all about it. The, these are good things that are happening in the systems. They've done upgrades while we are doing upgrades. And once they start to become completed, then the documents are circulated to finally get the compensation for those upgrades. So those upgrades, we knew about those. We wanted those. They are in combination with the work that we are doing on Ballas and we, work that we're doing at our substation in particular. So, yeah, you know, obviously, we've anticipated that this was coming. It, it's not a significant amount in terms of what the total power portfolio or expenditures associated with power are. But they're, they're welcome and probably long overdue.
Is there any more forthcoming in the next?
Yes. Yes. Thank goodness, there, there will be.
$77,000 to increase?
Yes.
That just gets back to more of?
Yeah, and again.
Above my head and it's just?
Right. And so, and again, the way you look at that, again, is order of magnitude. Again, we're talking about a $30 million purchase power account. And of that, you know, th- this isn't a million dollars in the total year. So the size of this transaction is very small, based on, considering what the total is.
Oh, yes. Yeah, it's a?
Think about.
Yeah. It's a minimal amount.
You're right.
The, the dollar amount doesn't concern me. It's just the incrementals and if we know about it going ahead, what you know and what you present to us. So I'm, I'm in favor of it.
So this is for 30 years?
Oh, yeah. Life of the asset. That's correct.
So for 30 years, and it's the 77,000 a month. So the annual is 926,000?
Yes.
That's the annual times 30 years.
Yes.
Correct. That's the total. And you anticipate there'll be another one coming through?
Yes.
Similar? Will that be 30 years, starting '27, '28, '29?
Yes.
And it'll be on top of this?
Yes.
So this one will end in 30 years?
Yes.
And then if you bring another one in a couple of months, that will end at a different 30-year point?
Yes, I, I won't be here for that.
And they anticipate?
Maybe none of us will.
Yes.
None of us will.
But yes, these, right.
Two months.
Right, because?
In a couple of months, something else. But when's the stop? Like, does this 30 years with this number, is that contained? Or do you have a?
Right. It's a life of the asset, right? So these assets, basically, right, they fully depreciate and then they roll off the books. That's, that's what happens.
Other asset you want to surprise?
Well, there are upgrades that are going to continue to take place, right? For example, as you know, we are going to be doing that line that goes along Rose Hill that would be the junior college at 34.5, right? So we've already put in for the move of the transformers and some things that are happening. Ameren will then also be doing some upgrades on a couple of switches along that transmission line. And when that is done, then they will come back with another wholesale distribution system amendment. And then we'll go to FERC and have a, a case about that expenditure and what that number ought to exactly be. So that's an example of something else that we know will take place. But again, these are good things. They are modernizing the equipment that helps to serve the citizens that are in our system. And we've basically looked forward to seeing a lot of these things happen. They haven't happened in the past as much as we would like, but now that they're taking place, we applaud this kind of thing and a partnership that makes sure that we can have some reliable power.
Any additional questions? Roll call.
Mayor Gibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Lizzo?
Yes.
Councilmember McLean?
Yes.
Councilmember Reiniker?
Yes.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Yes.
Councilmember Zimmer?
Yes.
Councilmember Jaxettek?
Yes.
Resolution 1512024 has passed. Resolution 1522024.
Mayor and council, this is a resolution accepting the bid of PLM LLC in the amount of not to exceed $101,233.44, which includes a 10% contingency of $9,203.4 cents for the two, or for the 2024 concrete pavement joint and crack sealing project and authorizing and directing the mayor to enter into a contract.
Do I have a motion in second to accept Resolution 1522024 as read?
Motion.
Second. Any discussion or questions? Yes.
Chris, can you talk to why, what in the process led to a $350,000 lower bid than original? If I'm reading this correctly. The, the original bid apparently was almost $350,000 more than what this one is?
Yeah. So we originally put this out to bid, and it was to replace all of the crack sealing joint. And then we got a very high bid. And so we were not anticipating that large of a bid. There's a lot of useful joint sealant in concrete joints. So we remove the, the, anything that's deteriorated or just non-joint sealant, and then leave the good joint sealant in and seal right on top of that. So that reflects the second bid. That's why we got the, the lower bid.
So some of the vendors kind of gave you that feedback, and so you recrafted what you were looking for.
Correct.
Significant. Yes, Mr. Reiniger.
When we talk about 1.8 million being spent on streets, are things like this included in that? Or is this in addition?
No, this?
They are included. Okay. Thanks.
My only question is, is it going to get done before the winter this year?
Yes.
Will you approve it?
Yep. It's a great time to do it because cracks are open and it's 34 degrees up.
I'm smokeling.
What's the, so you have 20 miles left to do, to do this every five years, every year, every three years? What's the?
Typically every two to three years, and then?
Here's, you might do the other 20 miles in it?
Yes.
Sure. Will that be good for?
Typically three years. So we, we generally do this every three years. So you would?
Three years, though. How about the, the 20 miles we didn't do this year? Is that going to be in your operational budget, you think, for next year or the following year?
Yes.
Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Mayor Gibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Lizzo?
Yes.
Councilmember McLean?
Yes.
Councilmember Reiniker?
Yes.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Yes.
Councilmember Zimmer?
Yes.
Councilmember Jaxettek?
Yes.
Resolution 1532024.
Mayor and council, this is a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor to enter into a reimbursement agreement for the, for preliminary engineering services with Union Pacific Railroad in the not to exceed reimbursable amount of $30,000 for a preliminary engineering review of the TAP 50, or 5502616 Grants Trail Extension Phase One Project at the South Taylor Avenue Railroad Crossing.
Do I have a motion in second to accept Resolution 1532024 as read? No move.
Back up.
Discussion? Yes, Mr. Schaefer.
I understand that this grant for Grants Trail, this $30,000 that we're putting out will be reimbursed to us from a TAP grant from MoDOT, is what I understand. Is that correct?
Yes. Yes, it will be reimbursed as part of the, the TAP grant that we got for entire trail.
Perfect. Nice job.
Any other questions? Roll call.
Mayor Gibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Lizzo?
Yes.
Councilmember McLean? Councilmember Reiniker?
Yes.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Yes.
Councilmember Zimmer?
Yes.
Councilmember Jaxettek?
Yes.
Resolution 1532024 has passed. Resolution 1542024.
Mayor and council, this is a resolution accepting the proposal of Lockmueller Group in the amount of not to, in the amount not to exceed of $125,900 for right-of-way acquisition negotiation services for STP 5505614 South Clay Avenue Resurfacing Project and authorizing and directing the mayor to enter into a contract.
Do I have a motion in a second to accept Resolution 1542024 as read?
Motion.
Second. Discussion or questions? Roll call, please. Mayor Gibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Lizzo?
Yes.
Councilmember McLean?
Yes.
Councilmember Reiniker?
Yes.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Yes.
Councilmember Zimmer?
Yes.
Councilmember Jaxettek?
Yes.
Resolution, uh, Resolution 1542024 has passed. Resolution 1552024.
Mayor and council, this is a resolution accepting the proposal of George Butler Associates, Inc. in the amount of not to, in the amount not to exceed of $190,334, which includes a 10% contingency in the amount of $17,303. which includes a 10% contingency in the amount of $17,303 for professional design and bid period services for the Woodgate Drive Water Main Replacement and Street Reconstruction Project and authorizing and directing the mayor to enter into a contract.
Do I have a motion in a second to accept Resolution 1552024 as read?
Motion.
Comments, discussion, questions?
Just to comment, when we're replacing water main, I'm hoping that we're getting rid of all lead services while we're doing it. If there's any in that, on that new water main, we're going to have to do that anyway to make sure that that gets taken care of at the same time.
Sir Kruger, can you address that?
So noted, yes.
Oh, okay. All right. Any discussion? No, any further? Roll call, please.
Mayor Gibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Lizzo?
Yes.
Councilmember McLean?
Yes.
Councilmember Reiniker?
Yes.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Yes.
Councilmember Zimmer?
Yes.
Councilmember Jaxettek?
Yes.
Resolution 1552024 has passed. Now we go into city council reports. I have a, I have something that I would like to say. I really want to thank the voters of Kirkwood for their confidence in this council to have passed two resolutions, I mean, sorry, the two propositions that we had on the ballot, Prop T and Prop R. It's especially Prop T will let us move forward with getting our streets into the condition in which our citizens want and deserve. And really appreciate the confidence that they put in us to get that done. That sales tax will be enacted mid-summer of 2025 and we will be able to start showing some progress starting in January of 2026. So, I just, again, want to thank our residents and I know Mr. Hessel wants to thank our residents too to, for addressing the charter and making that change that the city attorney no longer has to live within Kirkwood city limits. Will open up our capacity to look for the best person that we can, well, we have the best. So, the second best person that we could possibly have. So, citizens, thank you very much. The second thing I just wanted to quickly let you know is that I was down at the Earl Comfort Bird Sanctuary, which is in Kirkwood Park, not far from the rifle range. And the Webster Groves Nature Studies Society put up a gorgeous sign to help people learn what birds they should be able to see in our sanctuary. And there were children there with us and they went and looked at the board and immediately, one of them went out and found a Downy woodpecker right away and knew what it was. So, if you get a chance, it's really beautiful and we need to thank the Webster Groves Nature Studies Society for doing that for us. Do we have any additional council reports?
Thank you, Mayor. Two things. Next Thursday, November 14th at 7:30 PM at the Kirkwood Performing Arts Center, there'll be a salute to David Sanborn, Kirkwood native, who passed way too young. Amazing saxophonist. The benefit, it's a benefit concert, which helps support the arts. There are sponsorship levels for people who want to be especially generous. At the $1,500 level, you get a special table and all kinds of goodies and all of that. But I hope people will consider attending the concert, 7:30 Thursday, November 14th. This is presented by the Kirkwood Arts Commission in conjunction with the Kirkwood Arts Foundation. And then also, next Wednesday, we have another Kirkwood Arts Commission official presentation of a new sculpture outside the Kirkwood Performing Arts. It's a beautiful stainless steel piece titled "Mench", as in the German word "mensch". I'm not exactly sure what the connection is, but it's beautiful and there will be an official presentation to the citizens of Kirkwood at 6:00 PM. And I believe the mayor is going to be there to make that presentation. I will not be able to be there, but in conjunction with this, that same day, starting at 4 o'clock until 7:00 PM, there will be an opening of a new exhibition at Inside the K-PAC, the Winter Exhibition, the Gallery Program at K-PAC, which features works of three local artists, which are not listed on this little blurb here, but for council, the general public, please come and see the new exhibit. And if you're there at 6:00 PM, you can come and maybe have a photo op with mayor to be thrilled at this new piece outside the Performing Arts Center. Yeah, thanks.
Anything else? Chief Administrative Officer report.
Mayor, I have three things to report this evening. The first is the city received a request from the Kirkwood Optimists Club to operate its annual fundraising tree lot at North Middle School with a, with setup on November 16th, 2024 and tree lot opening on November 23rd, 2024, with hours of operation between 4:00 PM to 9:00 PM Thursdays and Fridays and 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM Saturdays and Sundays. This request needs a city, city council approval by voice vote.
Okay, a motion and a second, please?
Second.
Sir, motion?
Motion.
Reverse.
Right, I was like, what? Any discussion about this?
I would, if I had a second.
Yes.
So, 40 years as an optimist in town. I can't even tell you the tens of thousands of dollars that citizens of Kirkwood, not just here in Kirkwood, but from all over, have come and worked this tree lot over the years. I go back to when it was, the trees were unloaded at the train, at the farmer's market off of train cars. And we have pictures of that. So, it goes back way longer than I've been here. But the amount of money that these gentlemen, and I'm going to call Greg out, you're watching, all the years that he has been the chairperson for this and gets hardly no kudos. So, Greg's a long, lifelong resident here and has given back. And this is just one more of his givebacks into this town. So, I'm very proud to be a member and say that they've given back many, many times over. So, that's my two cents.
Thank you, thank you. Anybody else? Okay, all, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Okay, passes.
The second is the city received an application for liquor license for a wholesaler distributor intoxicating liquor, all kinds license for the Village BRH LLC at 1313 West Essex Avenue. This request needs city council approval by voice vote.
I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Okay, discussion? Questions? Is the applicant here?
I was just going to say, yes.
Would you all like to address us?
Herbert.
Sure. We should do this at the beginning.
Order. I, I thought maybe you've been waiting a long time.
I ordered one on lunch today.
Follow it all?
Yeah, I, I understand.
Over at the village, we can.
Tell us a little bit about your business.
So, we have a distillery behind the Village Bar that we sell a lot of merchandise and we have capacity to put our vodka and bourbon together behind the Village Bar. And we're looking for more storage space for all of our merchandise, our hats, t-shirts, everything else that we, that we're selling. So, this, this piece of property really kind of fits for us. I've had the fire marshal out, met with Captain Sumter and building inspector and Amy, you know, and it's, it's a very nice location and we want to make it nice like we did at the village and, you know, be a part of Kirkwood and.
Great.
Yeah.
Okay. Next to the fire department?
Yes, it is. Right behind it. It's closed.
I bet they liked it there too, didn't they?
Anybody have any questions? Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay? Okay.
The last item I have for you, Mayor and council, is the city received an application for liquor license to sell intoxicating liquor in original package plus sundae for HHRB LLC DBA Quickie Mart at 639 West Woodbine. This request needs city council approval by a voice vote.
Thank you. Do I have a motion in second to approve the application?
Motion. Second.
Okay, I want to make a motion to add a restriction to this liquor license, stating that except for the sale of lottery tickets, any and all machines or devices that directly or indirectly pay or provide money, cash or other monetary consideration as a prize or award for playing is prohibited. May I have, I need a?
Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Thank you, okay. So, now, discussion? Questions, any? So, now we're voting on the motion?
Correct.
Okay. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Okay.
With that motion, I will note to staff that on the liquor license, we need to make sure that that language is specifically stated on it.
I'll do that tonight.
Don't think you have to do it tonight.
I'm off tomorrow, John, so what's happening tonight?
Tonight.
Okay, and then, now we need to vote on the liquor license.
Liquor license, subject to the restriction.
Okay, we're voting on the application for the liquor license.
Subject to the restriction.
Subject to the restriction. We need a motion.
We already got a motion.
We already got a motion, okay.
You're voting on the liquor license.
Now we're voting on the liquor license, yes. Is the applicant here? Okay, any, any questions? Well, ask questions. All right. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
No? Application passes.
It's amended.
As amended, as amended, yes. City Attorney report.
I have nothing to report, Mayor, but I would join with you in thanking the voters for amending the charter to remove the residency. And I hope that voters understand and appreciate that that's in the best interest for the city of Kirkwood. It really is. I'm not going anywhere. I will continue to serve. Our contract runs through March 31st, so we'll continue to serve. My hope and goal is that whoever succeeds me, it will be a seamless transition process. Again, depending upon who you select through a contract for the future, meaning starting in 2025, 2026, that I will be available to assist that person in any way necessary.
Thank you, I appreciate that very much. Another retirement party? Yes.
Vote on that, do you have an answer? Yes.
We'll do that in a closed session.
City Clerk report. Yes, Your Honor, I have a few things to report on. So, first, I will start with the report of the November 6th, 2024 meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission. The following action was taken by a vote of six to one. The commission recommended approval of a city-initiated zoning code text amendment on the color temperature of outdoor lighting. A public hearing will be scheduled for that. After a presentation by staff on a zoning code text amendment on the size of residential accessory structures under Section 25-42I, a subcommittee was appointed. Subcommittee will meet at City Hall in the main level conference room on Monday, November 11th at 8:30 AM. By a vote of seven to zero, the commission recommended approval of, on a city-initiated zoning code text amendment regarding a marijuana facility or medical marijuana facility in Section 25-36U3. A public hearing will be scheduled for that. So, that's where I'll come to scheduled upcoming public hearings. We have three scheduled for November 21st. A request for a major site plan and special use permit amendment for vehicles say on rental, and rental for Lufus Toyota at 10525 and 10725 Manchester Road. The second request for a zoning code text amendment to add tattoo slash body piercing studio as a special use in the B3 zoning district and to change the use specific standards in Section 25-36BB. The third is a request for a special use permit for a tattoo slash body piercing studio at 11212 Manchester Road. Scheduled upcoming public hearings for December 5th. We'll include those two, I just read under tonight's PNC report, as well as a request for a zoning code text amendment on sidewalk requirements under Section 25-69A2. And that's all I have.
Very good, thank you.
Bunker down, you guys.
See no further business. Yeah, really. See no further business, this meeting is now adjourned. The regular meeting is scheduled, our next regular meeting is scheduled for Thursday, September, sorry, November 21st, 2024. Thank you. Okay.
Oh, oh, they're going?